Okay, we'll call back to order. As we continue, we had item 2.04 and we are about forty-five, fifty minutes behind our designated time and so as we move forward, again, I'll be asking that we would consider questions or comments that we have on material that we already have before us and that in presentations that are only the most essential information we provided for us and then we can ask questions for clarity, more information as necessary. 2.04, I'll turn it over now to our Policy Committee.
Well, we are excited. I guess I'll start to turn to Dr. Birdsong. So Reverend Haywood, Dr. Birdsong, Janelle and I, and also Mr. Cloud have been working on a lot of good stuff. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board and to Dr. King for allowing us to engage the community much more in the policy process. I think it has worked both with our naming, you'll hear from a moment, how we've worked to integrate comments we received from the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. Last night, the Special Education Advisory Committee has been working on the bylaws. So I just want to thank you for opening us up to that. And with that, Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Mrs. Doyle, members of the Board, Dr. King. Again, we thank you for giving us this opportunity to review policy with you. As Mr. Jordan stated, we have been very productive within our committee meetings and we have discussed a variety of policies. At our very last meeting, we talked a lot about our out-of-district transfer policy. So we're not only looking at policies that are bought to us by the DSBA, we are getting input from our stakeholders and from Board members about policies they wish to have us review. And so we did an extensive review of our out-of-district transfer policy during our last meeting. During our upcoming meeting, we hope to continue that discussion because there are some things that the administration will be looking at. We also discussed the social media policy and we do have a draft policy that our committee will be looking at this Friday and we're very excited about moving forward with that. We talked about family engagement. Mr. Jordan had a lot of comments about that today and so as he was talking about that, I was starting to think about the policy that we are thinking about developing behind that and I think that will be something that the School Board really would want to put in place. And so at this time, I would like you to just again, look at the policies that we have before you, BCFB, IGBG, as well as the regulation with that, JED, along with the regulation in KFB. And if you have questions regarding those policies, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. We did solicit the input from GAC in reference to the Gifted Education Policy and CAC as well. And Janice James Mitchell and Lisa Corbin were very instrumental in getting feedback from those two groups. So at this time, if you have questions, we'll be more than happy to try to answer those questions.
Dr. Birdsong.
As I understand it, all these policies have met BSBA muster first-
Yes.
-and have met Jack Cloud muster for the enhancements which you've entered. Therefore, I have no questions.
Thank you, sir.
There's only one area I just want to draw your attention to, maybe, I know we talked about a little bit at the committee and I couldn't quite remember what we decided, but in the, you know, we adopted previously under BCF, the Advisory Committee's process. And if you look at the gifted one in particular, it kind of spells it out, but there's an item somewhere I saw where it noted that Board members are not members of the committee. But at the same time, we have Board members that are liaisons to the committee. So that language is really saying that the Board member is not a voting member-
Right.
...of the committee, but we still are liaisons to the committee to provide whatever support and communication from the Board to the committee and to the committee back to the Board as, you know, as determined, I think specifically referenced, if it's strategic planning, then we are a member of the committee. But others were more ad hoc and liaison than being a voting member. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear and comfortable with that.
Just a question. And this is for my knowledge and edification, but is it common among the CAC and the GAC that the Advisory Committee provide recommendations of those committee members?
Yeah, well, we had worked on our process last year and what we said was, matter of fact, we need to do it coming up soon, that because they had existing committees and members, when we discussed it as a Board, we wanted to provide multiple opportunities. Ultimately, the Superintendent will recommend or the Board will recommend who the members are.
Right.
But we wanted to make sure that we had multiple pathways, just like we did with the naming of the schools.
Okay.
And on a final note, we did talk about, again, engaging the community and some of our external stakeholders more with policy. And so at our meeting on Friday, we will be discussing strategies, specific strategies, on how to reach internal and external stakeholders so that we can have more input on policy development.
Okay. Any questions on any of the policies I presented?
Can I just mention two other things? We've been putting our meeting agenda, meeting agenda, agendas in our minutes on Board Doc, so you'll see it there if you want to go through and review anything. And then just want to remind you, I know when we had Student Appeals, Reverend Haywood was asking questions about certain policies, that anything that the Board or the administration wants us to consider, you know, once the Board sends it to the committee, then as Dr. Birdsong mentioned earlier, we'll work on it and come back with, you know, draft recommendations that the administration has had a chance to guide us for your consideration. So if it's anything that anyone has thought of that you want us to consider, you know, just let Dr. Birdsong know and we'll prioritize it as best we can.
Okay. All right, here are no questions on the policies. We'll move on. Thank you all very much. We appreciate the work of the committee.
I'd like to add to that, just to say, this is-
Sure.
-this was my biggest challenge as a School Board member from the beginning was dealing with these policies. And this process has streamlined it and made it so much more efficient and effective. I just want to say, I appreciate it. I appreciate it going forward.
I agree with you, Brad. Okay. Item 2.05, Human Resources. We, again, we've had the opportunity to review the results of the survey. And unless there's some particular item or information that Dr. Myers, Dove want to share with us, you can, if there's something in particular you want to point out to us related to it.
I can just share, was it information that Mr. Fuddy actually reviewed the results of the mid-year climate survey and did a statistical analysis of them and found that even though six of them showed statistically significant variation, it was on the weak side. So two of them showed no significant variation, but six of them did and again, it was weak. So that wasn't included in the packet, yes.
Dr. Stewart?
I'm going to talk about glass that's half full. I know that Dr. King and his colleagues are going to take the information seriously and take appropriate action, but I'm going to go to the fourth, the sixth bar chart. It will be on the second page on the front side in the bottom.
Which question?
It says, "I have the tools and resources required to effectively fulfill the duties and responsibilities of my position." You know, my big thing is to be the barrier removal specialist that removes barriers. And it sounds like to me, Dr. King, that there's a great deal of good feeling that I have about seeing those kinds of responses to this question. People are removing barriers and your colleagues see it. That's the way I interpret that. It may be not as statistically significant as it could be, but it certainly is, to my personal interest, a demonstration of removing the barriers so teachers can do a good job.
What keeps us here is, of course, the continued review and analysis, but to make sure that they're real-time relevant to the work, but more importantly, to develop strategies to respond to what the analysis is telling us. And that's what the team has been trying to do in terms of how it should impact certain departments and kind of strategies that we work jointly to carry out, to modify what these statistics are telling us.
I know the other questions you'll take seriously, but that one I find particularly encouraging.
Other comments, questions?
Just briefly, thank you for comparing the data from last year to this year. I appreciate that and I'll be looking forward to what the next steps are going to be based on the results of this survey, how it will be communicated to the teacher, the teachers and those that responded, and then how we plan to increase the response rate next year.
And this is done anonymously. We don't even ask them assigned demographic information because we don't know if this is going to be elementary. But we do share this with the Executive Directors, the Principals, and another action that we discussed was sharing this with our Teacher Action Team to see if we could get some more detailed feedback on what some of these comments were like.
And that's probably the key issue is that how do we take this information, the data we get, and turn it around and effectively change what's going on in the climate? There are some troubling things that we see in here, but, you know, we're in the midst of change and as Dr. Stewart wants to look at glass, be glass half-full, I agree with that. We see positive change and we want to keep pushing that forward.
Mr. Jordan and then Miss Doyle.
And that's kind of where I wanted to piggyback on. There are a couple of areas that are concerned, but I wanted to, can you tell me how you tie it to the share additional comments here chart? I knew y'all were referencing, I guess the person can go in and write specific comments.
Right. The first eight, the first eight questions are required and the comment section is optional. It just gives them the opportunity to write comments. Some are obviously related specifically to the former questions, others share information that may not have been captured in the question. So what we do is look at the comments and look at the overall topic that is addressed in that comment and that's how we tally. And some, obviously, some comments are going to include more than one concern. So you might have a paragraph, some of the comments are paragraphs, so they might address several concerns. So we just do it by a simple tally.
And the questions are the same for last year to this year?
Yeah. The first eight are the, stems are the same.
So I'm just picking on climate because it's the first big double-digit number. So we see in thirteen fourteen, climate mentioned and you note that it's mentioned on twenty-five percent of the responses. And then in the next year, it's in thirty-six percent of the responses, but the number of participants is decreased.
Yes.
What does that mean? Does that mean-
Well, and that's, and that's one of the things that when I met with Mr. Fuddy that we talked about, that there was a decrease in the number. I mean, we did have a decrease in the number of teachers, obviously not as many as we had decrease in the number of respondents. But another thing that he shared was talking about the biases of oftentimes people that complete these or those that are at the extreme of the spectrum, either very happy or very unhappy. So that was another thing that, when he was giving me the statistical information that he shared, that we have to be careful with our conclusions from this because it's very general and it's really just to get a pulse on what's going on out there right now and to give the opportunity for the Executive Directors to share with their Principals to see how these results reflect in their individual buildings. Are they having the same concerns?
As you all, just to drill down a little bit on that particular one, since you all are seeing more of the data, are we finding that we are reducing staff, which may be resulting in increased workload and therefore is causing additional stressors when it comes to climate and whether or not someone would stay or recommend joining us?
The two major concerns that were noted related to workload are aligned with planning, the actual lesson plan template. When you see School Net, oftentimes it was related to planning. And then the, just the whole planning, you know, having to do collaborative planning. Some of those are transitions for some staff that haven't had to do the collaborative planning, so it is a challenge. And some of them don't necessarily see right now the benefit of that collaborative planning, so hopefully we'll get them there. But I do know that teaching and learning has done some professional development along the lines of planning and how they can use that template to plan for the week as opposed to using one template for one day per subject. So when you're talking about an elementary teacher, that is a lot of planning. So they have done some professional development to show how they could use that template and plan for the week.
Yes, good. And to kind of piggyback off of that, I think, of course, we need to be very sensitive to this and continue to work to develop strategies to boost climate and we will. In addition, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we are immersed in ongoing curriculum alignment, professional development and training for staff. That's continuing and that's kind of, it's not new, but it's different. And you already heard the lesson plan piece, you mentioned, working with standardizing that process and also requiring that lesson plans are done across the division and that's sometimes different in terms of activity that has occurred before. And then School Net and its design in terms of what it is supposed to do to support our work, training necessary for that, and that training has been layered and tiered and that's been ongoing. Then we brought on Synergy, which is new and different and had its, yeah, its turbulence with it as well because when you bring on a new program, many things come with it. And then the overall professional learning piece, you heard us speak of training for Principals, training for effective teaching. And we've moved from a lot of those kinds of things being voluntary to being mandatory. And so there are some things that are mandatory and some things that can be voluntary. So that's, you know, it's quite a bit going on and we have to remember that and we have to try to determine how to layer it in a way that we remain in touch with the humanistic side, as I always say. So I think a lot of that can be attributed to that and so we're having ongoing conversations about that, too.
Can I just look forward to at the end of the year where we can correlate the question of, I plan to remain with NPS for the following year and so we have the thirteen fourteen data and the fourteen fifteen data. I'd like to correlate that with end-of-year reality-
Right.
-and see how it corresponds from year to year.
You got questions?
Thank you very much.
I have 2.06, Operations. Again, we've received the CIP status update and we also received a very nice booklet related to the same most recently. And so I'd ask again that we will receive any information that's pertinent to what we've already received and then we'll receive questions or comments. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the Board, 2.06, Operations, consisting of CIP status update, five-year CIP, also PPA update and closing with academic programming for two schools, Larchmont and Campus Stella. With that said, I think we're going to have a joint engaged rollout between Dr. Thornton and Mr. Gay, who's beginning.
Mr. Gay, as, well, first of all, good afternoon. Dr. Houston, School Board members, and Dr. Gay, trying to get right to the point. So Mr. Gay will provide an overview of the five-year capital improvement plan. It is intended to be received as a proposal at this point and he will highlight the major components of the plan. It is a multi-year plan and perhaps for some of the Board members, if not all of you, it's the first time, perhaps in your tenure on the Board, that you've seen perhaps a formal multi-year capital improvement plan. I know the system has done them in the past, but perhaps as a, as a body, as a Board, this may be the first time that you've seen this in recent years as a sitting Board member. So Mr. Gay will again give a high-level overview of the plan. It is a proposal in that we would expect some feedback from the Board. It is intended to identify some of the major facility needs of the School Division over the next five years. It is not exhaustive. There are many, many other things that could go into the plan that would probably increase the estimated cost by another hundred and fifty to two-hundred million dollars. But it is intended to provide an outline over a five-year period of what the major system needs are as it relates to HVAC, windows, roofing. And of course, it includes the PPEA, which is the five schools in four to five years. The funding that's identified here for PPA is an estimate and it's somewhat dated in that when it was, when this document was prepared, the negotiations for the Comprehensive Agreement were still underway. Since that time, it has been completed and the Comprehensive Agreement, it actually is valued at, for those four schools of the five, is valued at just over one-hundred-and-one million dollars. The fifth school being Camp Allen is optional right now, pending the availability of funding and some other negotiations with the Department of Defense. So with that being said, I would just remind the Board from a process standpoint, tonight is the initial presentation. If the Board has additional questions following tonight's presentation, then obviously they can be addressed at a subsequent work session. But the idea is that just like with the operating budget, this is a separate budget. It will require separate action on the Board and once the Board approves the plan, then it would be transmitted over to the city along with the operating budget. It's a separate budget for funding considerations. So you'll receive not only tonight, this presentation, but in February, you'll receive Dr. King's traditional annual operating budget presentation, which is totally separate from tonight. And what we would expect is that when the Board is ready to act on the operating budget sometime in March, ideally, then the Board would also be prepared to act on the capital improvement plan. That being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gay.
Good afternoon, Dr. King, Dr. Houston and members of the Board. Let me say that Dr. Thornton is a quick studyer. Everything he said is what I was going to tell you.
He called me last night and told me what to say.
So he just said it a little more eloquently than I would.
Now, he gonna say it for real.
But I will draw your attention to what I think are the highlights and one of the most important parts of the five-year plan. That being what you're looking at right now is the summary. And of course, as Dr. Thornton said, we're requesting one-hundred-and-seventy-seven million dollars and of that one-seventy-seven, approximately one-hundred-and-twenty-five million make up the new schools. At the time we developed the plan, the number we used, which was one-hundred-and-twenty-eight million, four-hundred thousand, is the number we got from ballot at that time. So we all know that that's a moving target because it's still being negotiated. All right, so we needed a plug number to be able to use. And of the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven million, approximately fifty-two million are the additional needs that we have requested over the next five-year period. So we've also included, of course, you've got a breakdown and I think everyone here has probably received-
Yes.
...the plan, okay? So we did supply a breakdown for each and every project, but we also included all of the projects that we have done from 2002 to date, just to give you an idea of the kind of money that the city has awarded us and that we have spent over the years. And in your, in your books that you received, there's a breakdown of each one of those projects, too, year by year. And so since you've had time to take a look at the document, I can try to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Dr. Stewart?
Questions, just a comment. I noticed that none of the items in 2.06 are on the consent agenda, so that means the action is not forthcoming, but it is going to come. The next question is, Dr. Thornton said wisely, this is not exhaustive and I predict that between now and the time we might have to take action, that there may be other things that emerge in the conversations that we're going to have in the community. And finally, if a nor'easter or a hurricane came by and something hits, then I know it's going to affect your world. But just, not speaking for Dr. Robinson, but I've had the honor of sitting with Dr. Robinson in the Construction Committee this, this year. In my twenty years of experience in, in construction, I've never seen such excellence. Your colleagues are wonderful and getting ready to deal with any things that might be coming in the next few months. I know it's not exhaustive, but this is certainly, the document you have there was certainly very useful and, but there may be more things coming and we can't tell when a nor'easter comes up.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The other, other thing I want to draw your attention, if you take a look at the introduction, we did include a conversation about Maury. We included the conversation about Lake Taylor and Madison and we, as well as Booker T. And we simply stated that definitely within the next five, or by the end of the next five-year period, all of those facilities will need to be addressed, whether that be new facilities, renovation, or, you know, major alterations, but they will need it. So we didn't want to attach any, any value to that.
I just have to say, he just now got clarity to what I said in a nebulous way.
Right. It's also important to note, as we've discussed with our Transportation colleagues and Technology colleagues, that it does not include funding or any projects related to school bus replacement cycles, new school buses that may be needed. Oftentimes, well, some School Divisions may choose to include transportation needs as well as technology needs, but this plan is focused on the facilities themselves. It's also, this is considered to be, of course, a proposal, but it's also a first draft document. There are some edits that need to be done, some, just some quality control and some of the narrative that needs to be addressed. So we're doing that as well.
Thank you. Other questions?
Go ahead, please. Mine's merely a process question because I haven't had a chance to read the whole piece, but thank you for putting it together. It's great to see a long-term vision, five years being as long as we can really be reasonable about a vision. What is the process by which and how long before you want the Board to take action? When is it that you want to propose this be a final document once the Board's taken action?
In talking with Dr. King in anticipation of that question, I, I think we, we would expect that the Board would be prepared to take action on the CIP plan at the same time it takes action on the operating budget, which would be the latter part of March and transmit it over to the city at the same time. Two separate plans, if you will. One is the one-year operating and then, of course, the approved CIP. And generally, when a governing body or an appropriating body takes action on a multi-year CIP plan, they will take action on the plan as it relates to the funding needed for year one.
And is year one constituted fifteen, sixteen?
Correct. The five-year plan would go into effect July 2015 and run through June 20?
Yeah, 20.
Twenty.
Okay.
And for our, again, not to prolong, but for our viewers, the CIP plan would be fully funded to whatever degree. It's the responsibility, unfortunately, on the locality. We don't receive any state money for this plan. We wouldn't receive any federal funding for this plan, short of whatever may come out of Camp Allen at some point. But generally speaking, what's in this plan, this one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-plus-million-dollar plan would be, unfortunately, it would be the, the primary responsibility of the city to fund it.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I was just going to ask, you know, I know we did the facility studies some time ago and then we had DeJohn Richter and you all constantly doing your own assessments. How do you score what goes first? For example, in my view, if I go to PB Young or Jaycocks and you try to park, I think my truck is going to fall in from craters. And, but when I look at the list, I see surfacing in those schools much further out than maybe at some, at some other locations. Just trying to figure out how you kind of score it and also have you all gone back and kind of reassessed it based upon our priority and focus, schools that we're trying to give additional support, even with the Jaycocks Auditorium, Lindenwood, go to Lindenwood, striping, parking, all kinds of supports that I, I mean, I'm not an expert, but I'm just trying to figure out how you- an expert, but I'm just trying to figure out how you may have refactored or looked at those needs based upon what they may have been two or three years ago, whenever you first started down this path.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you're talking about all of the projects we do at every school throughout the district, right?
I guess so.
Right. Uh, you, I mean, you mentioned parking, 'cause you say you felt a crater.
Well, I just, I saw parking, I mean, before, I mean, I just, just from my own experience and going to certain schools, so I'd know if I, if you go to PB Young.
Right.
And I don't, and I never could figure out if the city's responsible, the house authority's responsible, if we're responsible. But if you go to PB Young, you make a right to park.
Yeah.
Dip, 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 okay? I mean, holes. You go to Lindenwood, you see some of the same things. You go to J Cox, in the little, you know, there's the front of the school, and then there's a section over to the right. And, I mean, literally, there's craters there.
Right.
So, so when I look at your list, I see twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen for some, and obviously, others are, are higher.
And so, yeah, and, and exactly what you said, there are other parking lots that are in much worse shape.
I'm sorry?
There, there are other parking lots that are in much worse shape.
Right.
Um, just like if you were to go to Oakwood, you might not get out if you're driving Oakwood. Alright, so, I mean, so the, I mean, these things happen, and so the, the way we score them.
Fortunately, it's not a, you know, I got you.
The way we score them is based on, you know, which school and which project needs it the most. And then what we also try to do is this, um, we try to look out and see, you know, how long we can make something last, as, as opposed to do we have to correct it right now? So you'll probably remember us talking about the Tywha Park roof.
Yeah.
And we were gonna replace it at, at one time, and then we needed that funding for another project, but we also knew we could patch the roof, and it wouldn't rain inside the building. So it's, it's based on the need, and, and that's basically how we score them. In the situations where you mentioned J Cox, you mentioned, uh, PB Young, both of those schools have areas where somebody else is partly responsible. Like at PB Young, you know, we even have, uh, the PB Young residents parking in that lot at night.
Yeah, no, right.
And so, I mean, that happens every day. We, we don't wanna try to gate it off. It's been requested that we do. We just think they're gonna tear the gate down, 'cause they're gonna bark over there. Um, the same thing, if you're talking about the front of J Cox, there is a section that people parking in that's close to that church.
Right.
That's used by everybody else too, so it's kind of a gray area i- at some of the schools.
Right, but I think, and I hear you, uh, I guess I'm just asking, in terms of feedback that you want from us, is that the type of feedback that you want from us? Uh, because I, in those particular cases, in PB Young and in J Cox, they are much more in the middle of a community than maybe some other school that may be more on the exterior, so they're gonna get used anyway.
So you're talking about feedback as far as the plan's concerned?
Right, so you're presenting this plan.
And the order, and the order and the priority of the projects, what years.
Dr. Thornton might want that, but I don't.
I, that will be part of the process, yes. That if the board has certain observations or questions.
At least you're honest.
I'm honest.
If, yeah, if the board has certain observations or questions or suggestions about can something be reordered, reprioritized, then, of course, we can consider that, and then just give the board the advantages and disadvantages of it.
Yeah, we can always consider it. You're just gonna make me find more ways to tell, tell you no.
Well, or maybe you'll tell.
But if you say, look, if Dr. Thornton says we're gonna consider it, then that's what we're gonna do.
But, but, but in all, I'm, I'm, I, I get you, but at the same time, I'm trying to be serious as well, because, um, um, you look at some of these same schools, you look at the, uh, uh, climate issue, you look at trying to retain the track teachers, you look at trying to support the academic needs, and, and you look at the physical environment. And so, uh, school A that may have lots of supports in other areas may not, while their physical, their potholes may be more frequent.
Right.
I, and I'm trying to figure out some way of saying how you prioritize, or at least re-focus, because, um, uh, you know, I just, I'm just using PB Young and J Cox as, as an example, um, I, I don't think it's fair. So whether it's what the process is and how you go about expressing that, I don't know. But, um, some of those schools, with some of these challenges, as you know, go back twenty, thirty years. And, uh, so I'm just asking, what would be a process to try to share with you those thoughts and get them factored into any changes that you may consider?
Share, share the thoughts with us, if, obviously, through Dr. King, or, um, if Dr. King wants you to share it with us directly by way of email or a call, and we'll make note. But the, the example you pull out, I think Rex would agree, that parking lots are one of those areas you all always challenge trying to determine which one goes first, because it doesn't have, it does not have a, a direct, uh, impact on student achievement per se, but some of those other things that impact climate and all. It's hard for a committee to measure that, to say which school should go first to get their parking lot redone or resurfaced. Uh, other things lend themselves to the useful life, if it's a considerable safety issue, but parking lots, at least everywhere I've been, I'm sure where Rex's been, is always the one that seems to be, well, why do they get to go first? But again, if you, if you express that concern, then we'll come back and explain to you in more detail why we determined that those particular schools would go in what order.
Yeah, and I just, I just use that, 'cause it's an easy one, but I just think overall, um, and I think of it in the context of when I have volunteers or, uh, partners, you know, who called me, and they say, "How come there's no lighting at PB Young? I'd like to send my employees over, but I'm concerned." Then that's an issue I'm trying to bring, bring to your attention.
And answer you, because they shoot them out.
I know that.
Okay.
And I said that, but.
Right. But look, he, he, here, here's what I wanna tell you too. Um, if you'll take a look at the summary, and you look at that first year's requests, at seventeen million dollars, and what I wanna ask you is, do you think we're gonna get that money?
That's not, that's not the point.
I know, okay. And so the next thing I wanna tell you is, just like we do with the annual CIP money, the three million dollars that we use, is that, just like you want us to take consideration, and we will, we always shift projects when other ones are deemed necessary or more important. So it's done all the time. And, and this plan is no different.
So I'll just say to my board colleagues, uh, uh, 'cause something else I wrote down was, uh, mobile units. You know, are we moving down the path of trying to get rid of mobile units, or are we just gonna keep adding mobile units? But whatever methodology or process that we come up with, I think is important, um, no matter how much money that we get, that there are some schools and facilities that we know we have significant challenges, both from a physical standpoint and an academic standpoint. And we need to have some discussion, how do we prioritize and communicate our priorities to the, uh, to the community? 'Cause I think it does have impact, and if we look at data, whatever process that we use, we should be able to discuss that in a way to make, make some tough decisions, so.
Thank you, Matt. George, and then Dr. Stewart.
And I also think we have to layer our assessment with what you mentioned earlier, which is the DeJean Richter. So what are our plans years forthcoming as a result? Our plans related to transformation, and our plans related to the milestones? So this is not just a narrow scope of looking at these thirty-six, forty-three, whatever pages and saying, yes, no, maybe, but as in, what are the priorities that we layer on top? I would wonder if, while I know we're headed into the busy budget season, if we do need maybe a separate session to just really talk about all of this, because I'm not sure we're gonna be able to get it in an informal session in a productive fashion to have a good conversation. I just lay that out there on the table now.
Thank you. Dr. Stewart?
Well, four years, Dr. Robinson and Dr. Houston have heard this, for two years, newer colleagues have heard it, but I would hope that the school board of the future would make some comprehensive, coherent decisions regarding the three ways in which a school system might get money. Annual operating budget is one area, but CIP is another, and Dr. Thornton wisely mentioned that some school systems, working with their governing body, have the opportunity to, to put technology and transportation in the CIP. There's some wisdom in all of that, but I'm not sure that there's been a conscious decision on the part of Norfolk on that, and the third being a supplemental appropriation. So if we had a hurricane or nor'easter next week, and we had significant new additions, and we have milestones, we're gonna be talking about Madison programs and whatever, there are areas, significant areas of spending related to technology and transportation that could best be placed in CIP, could. But I think that's an important and unusual conversation that I would want Norfolk to have in order to answer the question of three city council members for three years. What do you really need? And so, it's a philosophical conversation. You could turn to VSB to ask them voluntarily, to ask other school systems, how do you do that? Do you put much of your transportation or C, or, or technology? I think that's an important consideration for future boards, but it's very important, and I've been mentioning for three years, I'm gonna try and, Dr. Robinson, Dr. Houston, try and make this the last time I mention it. Uh, but I think it's important for the future. You can continuously go, everyone can continuously move mindlessly, there needs to be some coherence to this, and it's for the, for the, for the jurisdiction, for, for the kids, for everything else. And it's complicated, but I think it can be done, and it's gotta be done, as, uh, Mr. Wells said, it could be done in a July retreat. It's not something you could do at a, a monthly business meeting, but I think it's important. And if I were in, in Dr. King's position, I would not want you to increase my annual operating budget that says my per pupil cost skyrockets because we had a hurricane, or because we got new technology, or because we, we had to replace the buses. But, so that's my plea for the future, and I've said it, and I'm not, try not to say it again, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
One, one other question. Uh, the, uh, technology infrastructure here for, uh, media, for the media department, folks that are doing this now, does that, do the needs fall in here, or does it fall some other, some other place?
I would say we're going the operating budget.
Operating budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think there are a couple of other pieces left to this, uh, discussion. PPEA and academic programming.
Just PPA is moving along. Uh, as I said, the comprehensive agreement to, uh, construct, complete the design and construction of the four of the five schools is well underway. Of course, Campustella and Broad Creek, uh, will be really in the construction phase of, very soon. Uh, there was a, uh, all-day meeting out at Ballard today, and we were at the table, our representatives, the city representatives, engineers, all of the project team. So it's moving along. We're working on, uh, protocols to report back to the board, uh, the most appropriate way and the type of information that would be, uh, most useful to the board. Uh, we'll also be reporting, um, uh, very soon in February to the construction committee, just to give an update on where we are in the process. And then we have to work on the, this, the, the ongoing reporting protocols, the timing, what kind of information will be most appropriate, uh, for board, uh, understanding of where we are.
It is time that we were, as a school board, under the impression that soon, a school board member might be there to receive information so that the school board members could answer questions. So we're seeking the opportunity to be represented in that, in that discussion process, not to put you all on the spot all the time of being intermediary. School board members may have to progress to answer questions about this, and it was our impression that after the bidding was completed and everything was wrapped up, the contract was negotiated.
And Dr. Stewart, I'll follow up on that. We've already gotten consent that light is green for that, and so we certainly need to, let's make it happen.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? Okay? Um, I understand, Dr. Charbonne and Dr. Wilford, uh, give us a brief update on the, uh, academic programming for, uh, Larchmont and for, um, Campustella.
Excuse me, can I just ask you a quick question on the fourteen, fifteen CIP? We had agreed, 'cause there was, I think, a lack of understanding from the city's perspective of our spend on CIP last year, are you keeping the city current as to the data related to what's encumbered, expense, et cetera, for this year's CIP?
Yes, and...
I think we agreed we would send something to them quarterly.
Quarterly, right. And so...
And I just wanna make sure that's clear, so that there's no one misunderstanding on the city's part about what we're doing and how we're spending it, because we wanna be sure they know we are spending it.
Yeah, and we, and we sent it to them. The last time I presented it to you, to you, we forwarded it over to, um, the city, and this morning, Dr. Thornton sent me a, a fresh new document that's a little more financial and detailed.
Okay, good.
And so we're gonna change to that document.
Okay.
And we'll be forwarding that one, um, as well.
Okay, very good.
So we, we are keeping them appraised.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Excellent work.
Um, we're going to update you on the community meetings as we program the new schools that are being built. Last evening, we had a meeting at Larchmont Elementary in the media center. Um, the meeting was led by Dr. Savigny. There were, uh, attendees from, uh, the district, uh, as well as teachers from the building, parents, and community members. Uh, Ms. Campson was also in attendance. It was a brief meeting, because the school had a PTA meeting that was scheduled thirty minutes after this meeting, so, uh, we briefly discussed the key points. Uh, we talked about the, uh, vision and mission. Uh, the school is, uh, going to have a theme of science and the arts. So, uh, we had a lot of discussion on, uh, what does that mean in terms of the vision and mission for the school, uh, what the, uh, teachers, parents, and students would like to see in the school as it is transformed, and as this theme is carried out. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the programs that are already operating in the school, uh, that are already related to music and fine arts. Um, and the parents and teachers were very interested in how we would expand these programs. In other words, what is already programmed, and how we would enhance that with the vision and mission that was being created around this theme of science and the arts. Moving forward, we talked about, uh, possibly surveying the students to find out what they would like to see in the school. We have an, another meeting coming up on February twenty-fourth, and at that time, the attendees are going to bring some ideas, uh, to talk about what they want to see, um, what the focus will look like. We're going to sharpen it and, uh, create some definition to the plan. So we will begin, uh, serious planning at the meeting on the twenty-fourth. Um, we've already decided it will be, um, a meeting of substance, um, of at least an hour or more, uh, to start working on these issues. And Ms. Campson, you were there, if you'd like to add anything.
It was a very nice meeting, very well attended. There were a lot of people there, and mostly the parents just had questions about what did we imagine it would look like, and what Dr. Savigny, and, uh, was continuing to say to them is, "We'd like to see what you would imagine that you would wanna have for your children in this neighborhood and this school." So we really, there was a real effort to solicit the input from the parents that were there, and how they would envision that school to be for their children.
Yes, and the only other point is, we did talk about choice, because we know that is a focus of this administration and our superintendent, Dr. King, that we do create choices for parents. So there will be some seats at this school, hopefully, uh, about a hundred seats, and we can look at the way, uh, that we're going to, uh, create some choice opportunities for families in the community.
Judges? Dr. Wilford?
Okay. So, um, Campustella held, held their meeting, uh, last week, uh, in conjunction with the corrective action plan meeting. And, um, I would just point to, for review, uh, again, you received in the corrective action plan session, the, uh, PowerPoint that was used, uh, for that school's, um, introductory to STEM. And so, uh, they're a little bit, I would say, further ahead somewhere. And so they are a little bit, I would say, further ahead somewhere in terms of the academic programming, because this has been going on for over a year now. And the idea, overriding idea, still stands to embed and integrate STEM into the curriculum. It's no secret that we have a couple of things going on at Campustella in terms of the new facility that's under construction. We have a charge, a direct charge in terms of becoming fully accredited, and at the same time, the teachers are integrating STEM into the curriculum so that our students can move forward. I would like to think this aligns specifically to the essential actions in terms of using high-yield instructional strategies and the problem-based learning. And so I submitted to you, I didn't get it to you early, so our apologies for that, but I wanted you to have, along with that PowerPoint that you received in terms of the introductory to STEM, a list of the things that are going on at Campustella in terms of STEM, the STEM initiative. And so you have that in the PowerPoint, but this, I would say, consider it an addendum, because it outlines specifically the STEM activities that the students at Campustella are experiencing, and it's a long list, as you can see, of activities and as an implementation of STEM that's going on there. Another piece of that, on the third page, gives you the professional development that the teachers are experiencing as we look to, again, integrate the curriculum, embed STEM into the curriculum, and so we're off to a good start there as well. Like the Larchmont group, we have another meeting already set up for two meetings, two additional meetings set up for, one for next month, and then another down the road where we can get, I would say, further embedded in terms of how the academic programming would look at Campustella. But at this point, I'm glad to report that we're off to a great start. And the teachers that presented at the meeting, at the corrective action plan meeting, they were fully engaged and excited about what's happening there. It really turned the meeting, by having them, it ended on a positive note, thanks to this piece of information that they shared about the STEM initiative.
Questions?
This past meeting with Campustella, in combination with the corrective action plan, the parent input, what are we going to do at the next meeting so that we can get the parents there, active, engaged, to talk about the shared responsibilities?
I think we've got to go back to the drawing board to look at ways to connect this work to the individual student. Just from talking with Dr. Ambrose and being in that community, it's, I feel like, widely known, you have a coalition, South Side Coalition, a group that supports the school. We have parents that support the school as well. We have looked to move meetings closer to the community where those students come from. We've done things like that, and we will continue that. But when I reflect on the action steps that we're taking to get parents to come out that night, we do have, I've reviewed the phone log and saw where we made calls at different times of the day, and I've analyzed that, where, how many calls were received. So the phone, robo-call did go out, just to, you know, we did send a robo-call out multiple times, but that didn't get parents out. Flyers went home, the students booked bags, and we still didn't get parents out. And so when I reflect on that, it makes me say, that's not an indicator that the parents don't, are not interested, but their interests lie more in how does this affect the individual, their students. And so we've got to make sure that we do a good job in communicating that and getting the students involved to help the parents come out. So that's going to be further discussion, so that we can get more parents engaged in this process, and I feel like it can happen. It's just, we've got to go deeper into our efforts, and we will.
One of the ideas that was brought up in the task force meeting that we went to was one district used sporting events as a way to take advantage of the fact that a lot of the parents were coming to this particular sporting event. They gave free tickets to the siblings and to the parents that came to the event, and before the event started, they used the time prior to go over a couple of important items that needed to be discussed. So they actually held their P T A meetings in conjunction with the sporting event. And I know each school area is different, but this, I think we have to really think out of the box for these students over here, because parental input is so key and so vital. So if we can look at different options, and we need to look at them quick, because your next meeting is next month.
And I agree. Just to piggyback, one of the, I can't give you the date, because it escapes me at this moment, however, one of the two meetings will be linked to the science night, where the students will present, or the students' projects will be on display for parents. So we're looking at linking the theme, and that's what I mean by linking it to the individual student, to get parents out, not only are they supporting their students, their child, but they'll get the information just as you described. And that's, we've seen that work in different communities, but we want to see it on a consistent manner. So that's where the discussion has to, we have to open up discussion with civic organizations, the principals, and key parents in the community, and look to build upon that. And that's the approach that we're looking to implement, and see what can we gain from that, because it was made very clear that, and we understand, it's a different community. That's what they shared with us. It's a different community, and so with a different community, you need a different approach, and we're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that parents are a part of what we're trying to do at Campustella.
And that their input is valued, and that we are seeking out their input because we value their input, and it will not be disregarded in any way.
Absolutely.
So first, I'd like to thank you for what you provided, and I like the list that's before us. Now, I might break a board norm, because I'm going to adopt a school. The discussions we've had about Campustella, and the discussions that have been had about Campustella for years, I think there's still a huge gap between, at least from my perspective, what I hope we're aspiring and where we are. So the amount of workload and focus and pressure that's on the principals and teachers and students now, I don't want to negatively impact that in any way. But moving forward aspirationally, we discuss the STEM program at Campustella Elementary School being the best in the state. And I'm still not feeling or seeing aspirationally us really putting our teeth in curriculum, programming, academics, strategies, partnerships, that are going to take us in that direction. So I would just like to ask again, if you all would look at the A J Wittenberg School of Engineering in Greenville, South Carolina, go on their website, look at their model, look at the corporate partnerships that they've found, their focus on engineering, and the number of parents who line up trying to get to the school. And then there is a Henderson Hopkins K-8 in Baltimore, in partnership with John Hopkins and Morgan State University, so which kind of mirrors, or could mirror, what we have here with E V M S, Norfolk State, Old Dominion, Hampton, Virginia Wesley. We have all of these great higher ed institutions. And see if we cannot form a S P M T for Campustella STEM that rivals, sorry about the deal.
The one that we have for the new Lafayette Union School.
We drove back from Charlottesville, this is a little internal competition here, that can rival what they have going on at the soon-to-be-named school, and that we set a tone and message that is clear, what we aspire and what we're going to drive for Campustella. Personally, I feel like, you know, I went along with the program, with the choice seats and all of that, but I don't want to see us settle for anything but being the best in the state when it comes to the academic program and the supports. And I would ask if the board decides to support that type of effort, when we begin to talk about budget that we lay out now, what are some of the things we can do, partnerships that we can establish? I know that, you know, when Dr. Simmons was working on open campuses, she brought the gentleman down from HUD. Well, HUD has much presence over in Campustella. My opinion, maybe too much presence, but it's there. So is that an opportunity for us to leverage some things there? But the next time we talk about our academic programming at Campustella, if it be the will of the board and the support of the administration, I really would like to see us, you know, technology changes every day. I was over at Norfolk Technical Center today, they had their career fair, and I was impressed that they had various engineering companies, I think Old Dominion, different schools had four different tables. I mean, even if we were just able to get the list of the folks that they had at the N T C Career Fair, and try to get them engaged with Campustella, you would have a power base right there. So I'm not stepping on or around the coalition and the partners and council members or anything, but whatever time I have left on this school board, I really like to see us to have the quality of the programming match what we said we have inspired for the quality of the building. And while I'm good, excited about where we are, I think we can accelerate a little bit more. So, thank you.
And if I might add, this doesn't have to be an all-or-none process.
It can be phased in, because the students there need our help now. And so we don't have to wait, we can phase it in, you know, in semester periods, because right now, they have nice programs going on, but it's, and it needs to be more concrete, and it can start now.
Have a what?
Engineers.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's gone up and down over the years.
Where are we right now with that?
I don't know.
I mean, I agree. I think that's great that you're championing that concept, because that is what we're aspiring to, and if there are bright spot models out there in South Carolina or Maryland, it'd be good to glean from their experiences to push Campustella forward. And maybe with that in itself, excuse, I'm sorry, Dr. Stewart, maybe in of that, in of itself, will help stimulate more parents to want to be involved. They'll see some concrete steps moving forward, that it would excite them to get more involved.
And they had involvement, when the old school was there, people would just walk across the street.
Right.
You know, it's a little different dynamic going across the bridge, but I agree with you.
That's a whole different story.
I'd like you to add one more benchmark to look at. Last week, last Thursday, we kicked off the opening of the Slover Memorial Library, and it was stated at that time that it's the most technologically advanced public library in the country, and it is.
It is.
I would like to use that as the opportunity to aspire to the kinds of things they're doing. I'm sure we're not going to have the money that's been granted by the Batten's, the wonderful family that has put up the money for that.
We could ask.
We could ask. And if you look at what they're doing, it could be, that could provide some goals to shoot for, for what you're thinking about.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you all very much.
Item 2.07, community engagement.
President of the District, Members of the Board. 2.07, community engagement will be presented by Ms. Mather, and she will discuss and give an update on activity to date in reference to aligning, beginning to align discussion of the logo with the mission and vision and process.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to review with you the effort and the hope to align the Norfolk Public Schools logo to our division, mission and vision. That very important work, of course, has, it's not working, if you could, go ahead, Janelle. Thank you. Has taken place with our aspiration to be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, our vision statement for ourself, how we view ourselves. And we also need to remember, as we go forward, that no one symbol can really convey all by itself this. You know, this happens every day, it rolls out in the people, the students that we're educating, the families whose children we're taking care of, the staff members that we have. So I just wanted to remind us of opportunities that we've had recently. Janelle, if you could go ahead forward, when the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community has been alive and thriving in our district with the governor's visit, honoring Norfolk Public Schools by announcing major education initiatives right here in our district. Our community-minded students and staff members, this is the Booker T. Washington Junior Varsity Basketball Team and their coach. They raised 60 coats for children as part of our Children's Coat Drive that garnered almost 400 coats. A dad who chose Norfolk Public Schools, his children's elementary school, to come back to see them after two years deployed. Our wonderful teachers, and of course, our efforts to ensure that we're recognizing lifelong learning, with Ms. Burden, 111 years old, earning her honorary diploma. This is what we mean when we say we're the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. We offer this every day in many ways, and of course, we've talked about the fact that a fresh logo can help us reflect that and help us symbolize that. So we have undertaken a process to draft, to present to you a concept for a symbol that can represent the cornerstone concept. I've got some bullet points here that just sort of briefly outline the process that was used. We had local designers who were also, at times, volunteers for the district, who reviewed our strategic plan, our mission and vision, and developed a number of drafts. And I didn't have an opportunity to count them again before we came here, but it was something like, you know, 30, 20, 20 to 30 draft designs with different icons. We had review at that time by our Communications Advisory Committee, which met multiple times last spring, to look at all of the designs, and it was a representational committee, parents, community partners, media, staff, civic leaders, all of the groups that you see there. And from the designs, they really favored, they, you know, had great things to say, but they favored this one the most. This is the one that they gravitated toward. We reviewed it with Cabinet, with other internal stakeholders as well. The communications team has looked at it and provided feedback along the way. And then, of course, we've had an opportunity to show you an early iteration of this, and you provided some feedback as well. And we have made some additional tweaks to things like color and font, based on things that you all have said to that you all have said to us about it. And so we are still though at the draft design concept phase, so the next phase, we'll have to review this more thoroughly if we decide to go forward. So we are at the point now where we're reviewing the design concept for discussion, for feedback from you. And if the, the design, the concept is endorsed, then what we would be doing would be re-engaging with the designer to provide tweaks, to make it very formal, to make it in multiple versions such as black and white, so that it can be reproduced in multiple ways. We would then take that final piece and bring it back for, you know, review with the cabinet and collaboratively create the rollout plan, the phase in plan, it would be a phased plan. Part of a rollout plan would be timing for all pieces to fall into place for the transition to using the new symbol on all of our materials, our websites, you know, anything that we have as a district. Also, we believe that because of the phase in process, budget implications will really fall naturally because as we get toward the end of this fiscal year, departments and schools already are in the cycle where they order their new materials, they use up what they've had, and they order new materials. So this timing helps us with that because we can get ahead of that curve. There would be some other items we'd have to consider such as signage around the district, you know, the white fleet and that kind of thing, but a phase in plan allows you to plan And then with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Clanton.
I'd just like to add to Colly, that with the district's rebranding or with the new logo and symbol, that the foundation also is going to refresh its logo to coincide with that. If you can believe it or not, the foundation will be celebrating its 10th year anniversary in 2016, so we're preparing to gear up for that, for a 10-year kind of celebration and kind of working around. But the foundation is also working on its next long-range strategic plan and being able to come back and present that to you all during the summer session.
Questions or comments? So it sounds like we wouldn't be ready to take action quite this month based on the timeline that you just presented, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm sorry, can you?
Sounds like we wouldn't be ready to take action then.
Just, we're seeing feedback.
Okay, okay.
Over the next couple of weeks.
Good enough. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good work. Thank you.
2.08, Business and Finance, Dr. King.
Chairman Hughes.
Members of the board, business and finance, 2.08, FY 2016 budget update, Dr. Thornton.
All right. Thank you, Dr. King, school board members. What we have for you this evening is an overview of Governor McCullough's introduced amendments to the current biennial 2014-2016 budget. Next year being fiscal year 2015-16 serves as the second year of the current biennium. Traditionally, there, in the second year of the biennium, there are not significant changes to the state's budget, although there will be some adjustments to their revenue forecast for next year. But what I want to provide you to, this evening, is just a brief overview of Governor McCullough's introduced amendments and the potential implications on our budget planning. And again, this is related to the operating budget. So as you know, Governor McCullough introduced his proposed amendments on December 17, 2014, primarily our focus is on the impact of those amendments on our 2015-2016 budget planning, which again goes into effect July 1, 2015. The introduced budget bill is so noted as House Bill 1400, Senate Bill 800, for those who are interested. Key recommendations impacting public education in general in the governor's proposed amendments, of course, the annual updating of direct aid programs, SOQ being standards of quality, incentive-based, categorical and lottery-funded programs, and updating state sales tax revenue estimates at the statewide level as well as how they would impact individual school divisions and localities. And third, a moderate decrease, the governor is proposing, in employer rates for contributions paid to the Virginia retirement system on behalf of his employees. It's not changing the benefit itself, but what it would cost us next year to fund the rates that we would be charged. The bottom line, based on Governor McCullough's introduced amendments for Norfolk Public Schools, if you compare what our funding is for this year with what is proposed under the governor's amendments, we would see an approximate decline in state funding of $625,000. That's when you compare current year 182.2 million with 181.6 million projected for next year, again, a somewhat moderate decline, but when you've had declines every single year, it has an ongoing lingering impact of $625,000, just under, just over a third of a percent. And then the variables that impact state funding for NPS, of course, student enrollment projections, restoring of previous cuts in Virginia preschool initiative funding. You recall this year, in the state budget that is currently approved, Norfolk Public Schools and a handful of other divisions around the Commonwealth saw a reduction in VPI or Virginia preschool initiative funding for our pre-K4 program. That was because there was a change in the formula and the data that was used to drive the formula to determine what we would receive, and we were negatively impacted in a very serious way. But when we brought that to the attention of the budget and our legislative representatives last year during the general assembly, that was corrected going forward for next year. So those funds, based on the governor's proposed amendments, would be restored and we would benefit from that, and you'll see the implications of that in the next slide. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, decrease in VRS contribution rate, which on the expenditure side of the budget is a savings force, albeit moderate, it's approximately $600,000 expenditure And of course, enrollment is a, is a driving force behind, or driving variable behind our SOQ funding, our standards of quality funding, because it is based on the number of pupils in large part. And as you know, for the last several years, we've seen a, an annual decline of approximately 1%, which is roughly 300 students. And again, our current projections for next year would indicate the same trend continuing.
Even with the open campus and some of the other initiatives.
When we compare this year FY 15, the number includes what we have done with open campus this year. So we would compare that next year, assuming that we would have the same level of students in the program for next year. This does not assume a growth of the program for those kids who are currently dropouts to come back next year in addition to what we had this year. So we're assuming level student enrollment at the open campus for now. So in terms of our chair with the board at a previous work session, the, the basic implications of a 1% or 300 student decline from one year to the next roughly costs us about $1.5 million in lost revenues. However, this year, going forward next year, based on the governor's proposed amendments, that 1.5 reduction is offset in large part by the restoring of the Virginia preschool initiative funding. So we benefit from the restoring of those funds. It's not giving us more to do more to expand the program, but it's basically, when we saw the cut, when we experienced the cut last year for this year in VPI, you all made a decision to continue the program at the same service level, so basically we funded it with local funds. So we are losing SOQ funding because enrollment declined, but again, it's offset in part by the VPI money being restored. In terms of other FY 16 revenue implications, we said to the board all along during the budget process last year that we were balancing the budget in part on one-time revenue sources. As we factor those into our planning for FY 16, those one-time revenue sources total approximately $9.7 million, and they come off the top of the revenue base budget as we plan for next year. So as we said, we start this process with a revenue gap, if you will, compared to where we are this year. And you'll recall that the one-time funding was approximately 5.9 and then another 3 million for CTI that was carried over. Those are considered one-time revenue sources, and it also includes approximately $750,000 in one-time supplemental funds received from the city back in September. So all totaled is just under $10 million in one-time revenues that go away.
Can you answer a question?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'll wait till you finish this slide.
I'm done.
Okay. I thought I was reading, I just looked up too, that the federal E-rates, I thought they were going up versus reduction.
But they're, they're actually reducing in some targeted programs, like reimbursements for cell phone usage, those kind of things. What they're doing, they're beginning to, and Andrea's not here, but basically in a nutshell, what they're, they're redirecting their focus from telecommunications to internet access. Yeah, so cellphone, they're going to begin to incrementally reduce the amount of funding that they're going to make available for telephone, cell phones, and those kind of things that are not directly going into the classroom for more efficient access to the internet.
Well, we have those needs.
Yeah.
And we need to make sure that we are prepared to tap into those if possible.
And of course, at this, at this point, we haven't seen the direct implications specific to NPS as it relates to the changes. But we do know in those areas that I mentioned, there's a reduction, an incremental reduction over the next two to three years in some of those areas.
I was just saying they're providing the internet boost, and I'm not sure what it does in terms of the networking infrastructure, which we need. And then on top of that, them being able to have the devices, so it's, on the one hand, it's a very good thing because it gives you a boost, but all the things we would need to do in order to take advantage of the boost, we have to.
Take care of that.
Almost like a matching function.
Yeah. Any other questions or observations on the revenue implications at this point?
Back on the, if, I mean, back on the enrollment decline, is that a demographic estimate or that's just following past trends?
That's just following past trends using the cohort survival method. When we look at what's specific to us, how the kids are progressing through the school division, how we're beginning to age out in some areas, and when you have limited residential development capacity, you don't have the opportunity to really bring in large numbers of families with school-aged kids in affordable housing. So that's a significant factor. And like we shared with the board before, and you probably know this, and it's not unusual in urban communities and rural communities to see enrollment decline. We're fortunate that it's not 2% to 3%, where we're talking about 6 to 7, 9,000 kids. But it is a decline, and it costs us about a million and a half dollars. All right, in terms of FY 16, major expenditure funding considerations, of course, a top priority that superintendent has shared with the cabinet that needs to be emphasized very early in the process is teacher and staff compensation, because that's directly aligned with the strategic plan. And if, again, this is just to give the board an indication, of course, the budget will be presented in February and it could be tweaked, these numbers will be tweaked between now and then, but a 4.7 million dollar cost is based on a 2% salary adjustment for all full-time contracted staff. And that's fully loaded with the salary-driven benefits as well, your FICA and those others. The second item here, completion of the three-year school nurse staffing plan, of course, you know the history there. And we're estimating that to have an RN in each of our comprehensive locations or program locations, we would need an additional $700,000. And this, quite honestly, this is the basic staffing plan, one RN per location. And then third, this was an item that was a priority of the board and staff last year, but to balance the budget, we weren't able to fund it, but to begin to restore SOQ or standards of quality state-mandated ITRT instructional technology resource teaching positions to support the integration of technology in the classroom. Dollars to be determined based on the number of positions that would be restored. And basically what the proposal will include is a recommendation to again, develop a three-year plan to bring those positions back. And then finally, facility maintenance improvement, these would, this is not related to the CIP, but these are just the ongoing repair, maintenance and upkeep of our facilities. And I think for the most part, we would consider these mandates, either state mandates or being competitive, strategic plan mandates, retaining and recruiting highly qualified and effective staff. And potential budget strategies, many of these are familiar, the elimination of one-time expenditures. For some of those one-time revenues that we received and utilized this year, they were tied to one-time expenditures. So the budget balancing strategy would basically take those one-time expenditures off the top. And then, of course, rebasing, this is an annual process, rebasing the current compensation budget to reflect what the actual costs are this year, resulting from turnover and attrition and just changes in staff from one year to the next. Reduction in non-school-based staff, essentially central office. This would not be a reduction enforced per se, but it would be generated through voluntary separations. Reduction slash efficiencies per program review process results, essentially, we have identified some programs and activities or costs in the school division that are being reviewed, not a full evaluation for potential reduction and savings. Realignment of school staffing based on enrollment change, basically, enrollment decline could create opportunities to realign staff without increasing class size. And finally, the identification of new and increased revenue sources, one of which would be to identify opportunities to increase our Medicaid reimbursements, as well as some other internal revenue initiatives that we will bring forward to the board. Nothing that would impact families in terms of fees or anything like that. And what's next? I apologize, this slide, I did it, but I did not change the header on here, so I'm still in this year. But the bottom line is, over the next several weeks, many things are going to take place in terms of trying to come up and finalize the revenue expenditure budget, align that with the school board strategic plan, and we will present, scheduled to present, the superintendent is on February the 11th.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, questions?
The 4.7, that was, that would be in addition to the $9 million, the $10 million gap that you've already identified?
Yes, so if we were to take the, the beginning revenue gap of 9.7, combine that with what, what we had here and Dr., and Mr. Jordan identified the 4.7 as pretty much a required expenditure increase for staffing, then we're looking at a 13 to 15 million dollar budget gap, that those strategies would have to close.
That's not including the nurses?
It does include nurses. When I round the number up to 13 to 15, includes the nurses, the ITRTs, yes.
And is it possible, last year, we made the student pupil ratio adjustments at the secondary level, and we had some questions about whether or not there would be impact or not. Is it possible to get some feedback as to whether or not there has been, I mean, I don't mean now, but I mean, when we go through the, through the process, because if you come to us and ask us to bump it again, then I'd like to get a better sense of whether it was, didn't show a difference or whether it really did before we go down that path.
Mr. Chairman, when will we have the ability again to discuss the board's budget priorities and any suggestions that we had as far as items that we wanted to make sure that we were, were included in the budget?
So we have the schedule of board meetings for, for the budget. I believe next month, yeah, next, next week, I mean, for the, we did include a period, informal period. Thank you, Janelle. Thank you, Janelle. Five thirty, following the closed session. We'll have a 30-minute opportunity at that time, and then, of course, we'll have a series of meetings dedicated to the budget, but this time is designated for budget priorities.
Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes, sir.
This 2% increase-
Yes, sir.
For staff, teacher and staff, that will include all staff across the board?
Full-time contracted, yes, yes. Not substitutes or part-time. Full-time contracted staff, yes.
So would that include bus drivers?
Yes, full-time, yes.
Will we have any information on program review? I saw a list of various programs that we utilize as supports in our teaching and learning. Do we get a sense of where we could be as far as eliminating some of those?
The presentation will reflect the results of potentially eliminating some, yes. And those will be highlighted, where those program efficiencies or reductions, where they came from, yes.
And will we be, as a board, I guess this is something for the board to decide, will we be willing to go and look at some of our facilities and our needs and capacities there to make some alterations in the level of facilities that we have in the district? As a cost, we're looking at a substantial amount of budget gap here. We've got all hands on deck here for what we can do to balance this budget. So I would prepare for us to, I would hope we'd have at least had that conversation.
Dr. Thornton, I think it would be helpful, too, for the audience to understand the budget process in terms of engaging the community through the Budget Advisory Committee and so on.
Okay.
Would you mind sharing that?
Okay, well, first of all, just backtracking, we, the board did hold its pre-budget public hearing to get feedback from the community. Going forward, the superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee will be reconvened. It'll be a representative group of stakeholders, staff, administrative, school-based administrators, PTA, our teacher groups, representative groups, and we'll be meeting on two weeks from tomorrow at Coleman Place at 3:30. The school board's rep on that committee is Ms. Doyle. And basically, what we'll do, we'll share with them kind of where we are and what some of the preliminary budget balancing strategies are, and get their feedback. The challenge in having those type of committees beyond the advantage of letting them know where we are is when we have to make the type of reductions and decisions that we have to make, I found it somewhat unfair and unrealistic to think that they can really tell us exactly what to do with those, but just give us feedback around the suggestions and the implications, just to sensitize us to what the implications would be. And we can share those with the board as well.
Right. I think it's another example of how we are trying to engage the community in the work that we do, so that we're not doing it, obviously, in a vacuum, and that's not our interest or intent, but to get the feedback, I think, is very critical, because they can also be our spokespeople on the community to get further feedback and share again back with us.
And of course, as the board continues to have the presentation and work sessions, and then the board will conduct a public hearing on the actual proposed budget to get feedback from citizens as well.
Couldn't, didn't get much traction on the last year, maybe not the year before either, but I know we looked at the study, the differentiated pay classified study. We had some concerns about, you know, what we received there. But is it possible if we, I guess I'll direct, not the key, if possible, as you consider the 2%, that if there's differentiated or equity gaps that we have there, that you all would take a look at that and see maybe there's some sub-recommendations that perhaps you can come up with? Because as I recall, in some areas, we seem to be above the curve in terms of being competitive, and some other areas, we were behind. And so if we just continue to just do things flat, we continue to see those gaps, and so I'd like to get some feel for if there's maybe some targeted differentiation that you all can take a look at.
Sure, sure, absolutely. We can do that. We have information that would guide that thinking. The challenge presents itself usually when we're working to be competitive to attract and retain, and when and if other divisions around, they add X percent raises across the board, when and if that happens, depending on where we are with certain positions, it's still, it exacerbates the problem a bit. While we can do it, if others give across the board raises, while we're trying to plug the gaps where we are lower and somewhat higher in other areas, then it does present some other challenges about potentially widening the gap as far as teachers and that kind of thing. So just a thought to consider, it doesn't stop us, because we can do that and look at various options, and then share those options with the board in terms of where we are with various positions. And in some cases, we were very competitive, I think, in the top 30 region around certain positions, and in other areas, based on X number of years of experience, it may have been different, you know, so, and we would call that. You want to share any additional outside of that, Dr. Burson?
No, I was trying to think of some of the areas. I know there were some concerns about bus drivers, for example, and we went back and looked at the data to support that, and we could say that last year, we were very competitive. This year, I know Virginia Beach offered a raise to their bus drivers, and so, and please don't quote me on this, but I know that maybe now they are paying a nickel more than we are, or something like that. So we're no longer number one in the tireboard area, we may be number two.
Right.
So, and I know that there were some other concerns about, it was the school board, the school, the bus driver attendance, and so, you know, yes, yes, so.
Because they were not involved with the 2% raise, you're right.
Because they're not full-time contracted employees. They're part-time employees.
And how do they get a higher wage? Does it, do they get steps when, you know, if they stay on, or do they stay at the same salary base?
Unless there is some type of COLA provided to them across the division, then yes, all part-time stays at a certain rate.
Part of their challenge is with the Affordable Care Act, the number of hours-
That they can work.
That they're working. So that kind of exacerbates the hourly rate piece.
Yes, yes.
That 29-hour threshold prevents people from working more hours.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you, that's our time of the year.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you.
Okay, Sam, any remarks here? We're at 2.09.
No, none, over and beyond all of the discussion thus far.
No remarks today, right?
No, not today.
Okay, 2.10, Board Matters, of course, we've had our master milestones discussion already. School name recommendation, we've gone through the process. I'd like to commend the administration for the implementation of and execution of the policy for school naming, or something we had to get on top of right away in the fall, and I think it has been a pretty smooth process, and names have been recommended. Is there any discussion tonight? Of course, we are scheduled to take action on next Wednesday at our business meeting on the name for the school formerly known as Lafayette Winona. Are there any?
You can call Brent.
So, are there?
It's nice to be on the board that recognizes that type of musical talent.
Any questions or comments on this item at all tonight?
I would just say that we all received a letter from the SPMT group, and they clearly had a name that they had endorsed. And again, that group is a conglomerate of community members, various stakeholders, ODU, business, community leaders, teachers, parents, and I would just ask that, I know we're not voting on this tonight, we're just having our discussion, but that letter, I would ask for us, if we haven't read it already, to please do so.
Okay, thank you.
So, are you, I mean, are we expressing preferences, or?
Certainly you may.
Okay, well, so, you know, I had mentioned to some of you that, you know, I did have some appeal for the L.J. Baker Academy because of the history, but my preference is the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, and I think that fits both what I've heard in terms of the programming approach for the school, and I think it also continues the geographical location just like we had previously. So my preference of the five we had before us would be that.
Yes.
I will echo what Mr. Jordan said. And the third point is, from a branding point of view, it also fits the naming architecture for some of the NPS schools, Rosemont being one of them, where it begins with the word "Academy" of, blah, blah, to Rosemont. So again, it's just standardization of naming, which is important for a brand. So I, again, though, support and advocate for the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, and I, again, agree, I like the geo approach as well.
Any others?
I would echo that. I also support that, and I think that that's a very appropriate name for that school.
Other?
I'm not going to make it, I was going to make a joke, but I'm not going to. This is Brad Robinson's question.
Are you having a pause, a pause, a pause moment?
No, I think, well, I'm not dead 10 years, so.
Just a year.
Exactly. No, I like the name, too. I like the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. I think that fits really well.
Yeah, and certainly, it was the top among two that I did like, and I thought the Academy for Discovery was certainly my choice also. So we'll take action on next Wednesday. Okay, agenda plan.
Again, that's, I'm going to go on the consent agenda, that'll be a separate vote.
No, no, that'll be a separate item, yeah, separate item. Okay, okay, as far as agenda planning, you already posted the agenda for January 21st, the business meeting next week. We will meet this Friday morning for agenda planning for the work session and business meeting for February. Are there any comments, one, I would say, on next Wednesday's agenda?
I just want to make sure that any recommendations that comes from Dr. King and his colleagues regarding after-school, summer school, whatever, which I requested earlier, would have time to be presented during the first meeting in February and precede the superintendent in consideration to present on February 11th.
Say, I'm sorry, say that one more time for me.
In response to the, we have, first of all, we have a whole series of other milestone presentations that may not have implication for this budget cycle, but certainly are important to consider.
Right.
But there was one tonight on time that I had requested some estimation of costs for after-school, Saturday school, summer school, whatever. I would like to see those kinds of projections, and, you know, we all had a discussion together recently at a retreat of ROI, return on investment. I'm going to refer to that as we consider what we can do. You know, the state and the federal government have deserted us in funding schools, Norfolk City has filled in the gap, and we may be asking for more funds, but I'm going to look at the ROI, return on investment. If some initiative has very little funds required and can result in great student learning, I'm going to consider that. But I look forward to seeing the after-school, Saturday school, summer school, so forth, before Dr. King has to get my final input.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And the result, and the rest of the milestones, making sure that that gets in, but I think a lot of them will not like the proposals for programmatic and location of Madison may not have implications for this year, but it's still, all of them, I think we need to hear, particularly as we plan for the future. But thanks for the opportunity.
Are you asking for all of the additional milestones that we didn't?
No, no, I think there was a plan for how to do that, but I don't know what the plan is.
The plan is that they are to be shared with us on February 4th regarding pre-K, poverty targets, Madison location slash alternative.
Yeah, yeah. But the biggest one that I was interested in was done, and I'm very grateful for that at this time.
So for our agenda on next week, we have two separate formal votes that will take place, the waiver and the school naming. And then, when will, on Board Docs, will the agenda for the work session for February be up?
So we have the meeting on Friday?
Okay, and then it'll come on?
Yes.
Okay.
So I anticipate by, you know, Monday.
Okay. All right.
I would echo what Dr. Gabriel's getting at. I would advocate that we post the informal board meeting agenda sooner than the Friday before the meeting, so that people have access to it, while knowing that it may change, which it does, and that's fine. But I think to have it up earlier is better. Yeah, so the Friday of the work session, so today, today's meeting was technically posted on Friday. Is there a reason why we can't post it earlier so that people have a chance?
Knowing that there could be some-
Right, yeah, just, it should be noted, as you said, though, sometimes minor changes are made.
Working document.
Exactly, exactly, okay. All right, any other comments on upcoming business meeting or plans for February 3rd? Is that 3rd, 4th? 4th, I'm sorry, 4th, work session?
Is there, I didn't see a 4th.
No, no, we haven't planned yet. We meet on this Friday for that planning.
You're not missing anything.
On the, you know, some of the, oh, oh, when we were going through the budget, and we were also mentioning earlier about the Policy Committee, I think we are still trying to get to some of the initial recommendations around, back with better word right now, incentives for retention and attracting, is that right? I think that's right.
Yeah, I know we were looking at, we talked about administrators.
Right.
And we discussed what we have in place right now, and so we didn't spend a whole lot of time on it because of the time we were devoting to the other policies, but yes, we talked about that, as well as some other proposals that were presented to the board a while back.
Right.
We were going to review those again.
Right, and we're going to try to review those in time for budget consideration, if any?
I would think so.
So, we're reviewing, just want to make sure you're hearing that, that, you know, we had talked in the past, and Dr. Burson, Dr. King had previously put forward some ideas around retention and attracting, especially for some of the harder staff schools, and so we're looking at that in the Policy Committee, that, you know, we may try to come back with some recommendations to factor into the discussion if the administration deems it appropriate.
Dr. Robinson? And again, it's nice that we, that we look at adding more money, costing expenses into the budget, we've got to look at something where we can take away.
Well, that's what, it's not just money, but some of it may be-
Non-monetary.
Non-monetary.
Incentives.
Stuff to take, yeah, yeah. Because as we talked about before, some of the research shows it's not about the money, it's about other things.
Right, right. Professional development, support.
Right.
Okay.
A variety of things. Jeans stay on Fridays.
Can you do a board meeting? Okay, well, we're at the end of this evening's agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? Did you have some?
We're going to go around the room.
If you like.
All right, I, I'll kick it off. I just, I thought that we had a lot of very positive events happen over the past few weeks, starting with the governor coming- few weeks, starting with the governor coming to Norfolk Technical Center hosted by Mr. Monroe. I thought his students and staff did a very good job in receiving the governor, and I thought it was very commendable that the governor chose Norfolk and Norfolk Technical Center to start off the new year campaigning on his educational initiatives, and I was very happy to hear about his pre-K commitment to helping get more kids in the classroom, because as we heard today from the principals of the schools, that pre-K does have a substantial impact on student learning. The other item that I wanted to point out was that he was, good to mention, rewarding schools for progress that they've made, and while we have been categorized and either accredited, accredited with warning or denied, it would be nice to be able to fall into a different category, especially if we're showing improvement, which we all know as educators and parents, positive reinforcement leads to better and more positive behaviors, so I think that that would be good for us. And of course, we, as a board, over the past weekend, we went and had some of our own professional development, including information on data and how to interpret data, and one of the board members specifically reiterated how important it was to say thank you to all of our staff, from those who greet the kids at the beginning, whether it's the crossing guard or the bus driver, to the teachers, and we know that he says thank you all the time to the teachers, but again, I know us as a board collectively, we want to say thank you to all of our educators and thank you to each other for the work and hours that we're putting in to try to move the district ahead. I apologize that I wasn't able to attend the PTA meeting on Monday night. I was working in the hospital, but I understand it was well-attended, and I've, what I've heard so far is that more nights such as those are something that parents are looking forward to, so I'm excited about that, and that's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to mention this, that leaving off on that, the PTA, the Norfolk Council PTA Board, they really did all the work, and Karen Tanner gave them a tremendous amount of support, so, you know, we got to show up and do our thing, but they really, they really work hard, and I enjoy working with them, but I can't keep up with them. They, they are an amazing group, Dr. King will tell you. So we, we kind of just sit in the meetings and be quiet and ask what we can do, and if they say, can you have lunch with the superintendent? He says yes, and we, you know, remove barriers to support their efforts, so just wanted to thank Dr. King and Karen Tanner in particular for the support that they give to, to Norfolk Council of PTAs.
Dr. Robinson?
I just, I, I don't like to repeat myself, but I'm, I'm going to take that privilege today. I just want to remind about shared responsibility, and parents are the first and most influential teachers in a child's life, and the more that we can engage the parents to get them involved in their child's education from pre-K through postgraduate degrees is a good thing. And the second thing I want to talk about real quickly is anybody that's considering to running for the school board, I know that's inevitable, it's going to happen, we'll figure out how it's going to happen, I would encourage them to get involved with the school board, to come to these kind of meetings, to sit through and see what kind of work's being done, so they, they have a good idea of what, what they want to get into and, and what they can bring to the, to the table. I think it's very important for the school division to have as seamless a transition as possible through this process. It's, it's going to be a big change, but I'm hoping that qualified and motivated citizens will step up and, and, and come in and make a difference for the benefit of children.
Thank you. What else?
Yeah, I wanted to say that, two things. One is I, I also was very impressed with the turn, encouraged by the turnout of the parents at the PTA function that we had yesterday. I thought that that went very well, and some very good comments were being made, and I, too, would agree with the parents that were there, that we need to have more opportunities for the parents to be able to dialogue with board members like that, so, thought that was great. Also, want to commend the staff for the type of reporting that was done today. I was very engaged with the reports from the pairing of the schools, and, and it gelled very nicely with the school board training that we, we have received just this past weekend, and for, it helped us to better understand that process, which really confirms the value of our school board training and the amount of time that we do to spend on that. But I want to thank the staff for the hard work and for Dr. King and, and trying to make the information and the data very meaningful and available to us, and so I thought it was a very good meeting today.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I think this school year is going to be a stellar year, 2015, the actual calendar year is going to be a great year. I think we're starting off very strong, and I think we have a great division that is well-grounded in its reality and knows the direction it needs to go in, and knows the pace it can achieve, and I appreciate Dr. King's leadership in talking about the acceleration of learning, because I know we all agree with that, and I want to thank the administration, but I want to thank the teachers, the principals, the staff, and everybody who works in the division for making this a very strong division. And I think we should all be very proud for the division that we work in and for the city in which we're all a part of. And again, it does take the community, and I think more engagement with the community is necessary, and on Monday night at the NCPTA meeting, I encouraged folks to reach out to us, watch us being streamed, email us, call us, you know, we are available as board members, we live here in the community. So I just want to say that I look forward to a very strong year, and I know that we are all working very hard, and we're very focused in our approach, so thank you.
Thank you. I think it's been a good work session, and I certainly appreciate the administration. I know that it takes a good deal of work and planning to prepare the presentations and try to find some measure of precision as it relates to what we need to, to, to do the work that we are appointed to do, so I really appreciate the work and effort that goes into it, and, and I really appreciate the progress that we've made, I think, in getting better and better at, at planning and having, again, the right information in our work session. So thank you all for all that you do, and our meetings adjourned. Have a good evening.